Go ahead.
I will need a volunteer to go into the Spanish channel to test it out. Alex is one of the interpreters and Andres is the second interpreter that needs to be assigned.
Okay, thanks.
Did you go ahead and use the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, can please stand with your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Then Gabe, can we get a roll call?
Present.
Present. Now, moving forward to the approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any item being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda. So we have nothing, is there a motion? I'll go ahead and motion to approve the agenda as presented.
One second, motion.
Moving forward to the approval of the minutes. Item one is going to be the planning commission minutes from July six, twenty twenty two.
Motion to approve them as present.
I'll go ahead and second the motion. Now we go on to our written communications. It looks like we have nothing on the agenda. Do we have anything?
No written communications that staff as you see.
Appreciate that. Moving forward, we have the public comments, not agenda item. The public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please let me your comments to three minutes. Do you have anyone in the attendees?
There are none online.
Couple more seconds and then. Six oh five, we're going to go ahead and close the public comment. And then moving on to report and requests. Thank you, Gabe. And then now going on to our non-hearing items. So item number two, architecture review. Number twenty-two dash six to install a freestanding identification sign of twenty-one feet. Right, twenty feet. I located eighty-six, one hundred, Avenue fifty-four, in the M dash H heavy industrial zone.
We have a real brief presentation on this one. That's recommended continuance. Okay, so thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners, this item. All right, this item is architecture review twenty-two dash zero six for separate hardware equipment business. Next slide please. The locations business, eight-six, one hundred, Avenue fifty-four. It's at the corner of Avenue before and Tyler Street. There was installed a twenty-five foot standing identification sign, which is permitted in the municipal code. Individual businesses can request the identification size of that size. Stat recommends planning commission, you consideration of this item to September seventh, as applicants have to discuss the product design a little bit further for the site. So that's our recommendation. That's in my report. If you have any questions, that's the answer.
I just have one question. It says on the presentation, you said twenty-five feet, but here on the agenda, it's twenty-one.
Oh, twenty-one. Sure. They have the bill check with with Mickey on it, so it could be twenty-five. But we'll try to clarify that in the minutes to see what site it is. But I guess the good thing is we're not. Sorry about that. And so on the continuance, you would need to give a look on September seventh.
And just because we are not taking action, then we don't have to open public comments.
You don't have to open. I believe that's correct, right? Henry? Your counsel.
Can you repeat that, Gabriel?
They're wondering if the public hearing has to be open for their interesting continuing decided.
Yeah, so they can go ahead and open it, but I just want to make clear that if anybody does speak on it this time, they won't be able to speak on it when it comes back. So they only get one one bite at the apple, as you could say.
So at six oh nine PM, we're going to go ahead and open the public comments. However, if you do speak within this meeting, you will not be able to speak on the item again.
There are no raised hands.
Thank you. Right. So also at six oh nine PM, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. We have anything?
Motion to to request to request a continuance of the item until date certain of September seventh, twenty twenty-two as per email from.
My second. Here was a motion.
Okay, moving on to item number three, the American Desert LLC multi-tenant micro business project.
Again, vice chair members of the planning commission. This I will be giving this presentation. So this item is a baronage request by American Desert LLC. You might recall, this is this applicant came for the planning commission in two thousand twenty-one requesting allowance for CUP in a change zone or industrial office complex at eight-six-nine-five Avenue four. The after receiving approval from that for that use from the planning commission city council. They are trying to have new tenants occupy that would allow for cannabis, commercial cannabis uses that are permitted building. One of the uses that isn't permitted is non-storefront retail, which means that they're not selling cannabis in the storefront at the location, but allowing for delivery. Code does not permit that within five hundred feet of another storefront retail business or another non-storefront cannabis business. So I'll go into that a little bit more, why the various requests is needed by the applicant. So the location of this is just to the south of Avenue four, near the south west corner of Avenue four and Enterprise Way. The existing building, eight thousand square feet on a parcel at one point twenty-nine acres. You might recall the action of my commission and city council took on this was to resume property from heavy industrial manufacturing service, which is required in order to allow cannabis use on the property. That was approved. He was own and conditioning unit that was approved. And they needed variants at that sign because the lot size was too small. It did require a lot size of five acres in the industrial park overlay zone. And so that's why we request the variance that there is granted to allow to operate with commercial cannabis activities. Aside from that, there on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, city council approved the conditioning permit in the change zone for a one point seven acre parcel directly north. That's directly southwest corner of Avenue four and Enterprise Way. And that's where the tell really store front retail micro business. So CUP was approved for the location at Suite H in that existing multi-tenant building. Before there's are some limitations in terms of distances for non-storefront delivery that might occupy the proof site. So the existing conditions of the subject site is this. There's an existing industrial multi-tenant building or industrial office. Some more photos. The existing tenants as provided by the applicant include these ten. And there are some units that are vacant. I believe the cannabis-related tenant is massive industries. Not aware of any others that do cannabis. So basically how this works, because CUP was issued to the owner, there could be new tenants that would be allowed to do commercial cannabis activity under that CP. CP acts as an umbrella, but these businesses are still required with a cannabis regulatory permit. So the subject building is this one shown on the aerial. The next slide shows where Tel Aviv located. Tel Aviv, they are open and operating currently. They received their approval prior to America. Intensity the distance between the two buildings obviously looks like within five hundred feet. And so the municipal code requires that the non-storefront retailer that provides cannabis delivery service for the five hundred feet from any other store or retail or non-storefront retail cannabis business. The applicant request allowed for the delivery service or ten for the building. Therefore, they requested that there is for the commission to allow for that. Here's a map that shows the five hundred foot distance, kind of like a lighter green color and all offices, not the radius from the child relief business. So that entire conflict. There are certain variance signs the planning commission is required to make, making a variance decision. So in reviewing it, staff could not make the first three findings. So those findings are that if we apply the zoning standards to the site, is there a hardship that's inconsistent with the purpose of municipal code? We didn't see any particular hardship. The applicant that presents the particular hardships and in their application. Number two, are there special circumstances applicable to the subject properties, such as shape, geography, location or surroundings? I mean, the the site happens to be within that five hundred feet. But because that's a zoning standard, that's that would qualify as a special circumstance. That's just the standard of the municipal code. Number three, you know, would it deprive them of the preservation enjoyment of substantial property right? Or used generally possessed by other properties in the same zone. No, everyone else is subject to the same restrictions as it relates to commercial cannabis activity. And then possibly the various findings four or five to be supported, but it's really the first read that we could not make. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution two thousand twenty-two to design and variance according to the findings made by staff. And there are no conditions. Apologize for that. And I just want to point out to an error that might have a confused commissioners for this item. You were to go to the staff report. It did mention. Okay, there is a sentence that says the applicant received a city council approval to allow for multi-tenant cannabis micro businesses to occupy suites to include activities of this motivation and factoring and distribution only, no retail sales. So that was what was approved before. And then I go on to further say not store front retail business activity for cannabis delivery is permitted. Should have said not permitted. So I will be correct. Just want to clarify that at the record. But that's the end of my staff report. I happy to answer your question. The applicant is for the variances in the audience. This case, if you have questions or if you have a presentation. But if you want to bring your attention to the letter that was submitted by the owner of the child reading. And so that's provided to you, but basically it's a letter that is opposed to the planning commission granting the variance.
My question, this is the clarification and the the there so Coachella relief, she states the five hundred feet approval language is stipulated there are no other such establishments can be located with the five hundred feet of our location. That's this micro business license in state or the city.
From the city. So if like the storefront business that we're related, I'll be like there can be another non-storefront retail business within five hundred feet.
So how does that work down here? Is this because this is the overlay and this is a special spot?
Yeah, okay, special standards for the sun zone.
Okay.
But that that area is a little different.
Because it's different. Okay, because it's a different zone differently. Okay, just one clarification there. That's all I want.
All right, so looks like we don't have anything else to say. So at six twenty, I'm going to go ahead and open up public comment.
There is anyone online? If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
And I see the applicant, El Barles, in the audience. If you want to speak, raise your hand.
Go ahead. And go ahead and unmute.
I, you are on mute still, so we can hear you if you're speaking.
Back to city council, this is El Parla, I'm bearing the orange. And we basically got the for the building. The time where we can get the same at the location. Level. We feel that this us getting this.
This is Gabriel Perez. You have you have a bad connection right now? We can't hear you. Keep coming in and out.
Can you hear me now? Is it better?
Yeah, now we can hear it.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, where I'm at, you know, the internet is not the best. So what what I'm basically saying is that the our the retail delivery is going to be not at the location. So we are not asking to have a retail at the storefront over here. You know, we feel that this will not have any negative impact, the uses in the area. And this is going to basically be addition to what we already already have. Got to do well for. We feel that we should have, I mean, right now we don't have a pen, but we would like to have option be able to render to someone that may know to delivery, not the retail the next door building, the retail storefront. And we would not want to have anything like that over there at all. But like I said, we would like to have that option. And like I said, it's not going to negatively impact, you know, the uses in that area. And basically, as you can see, a whole bunch of other businesses. Not only the York of Tana, but cities. So I request that we be allowed to have that option.
Thank you so much, Joe. Is there anyone else in the attendees?
See any other hands raised? On Zoom, there's no other anyone here.
Okay, so at six twenty-four PM, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments.
Andrea, I have a question for you, Henry. This is only three of us. How does the voting work?
So on the municipal code, it says that a quorum of the planning commission is three members of the commission. So it would be a majority of you guys. So if two of you vote in favor. then it would pass. And if, and if it wouldn't be a majority of you guys, then it wouldn't pass.
It's always weird. It's the number.
And then could we pull up the
Excuse me, I just double checked. And it's actually all three, all three of you would be necessary to effectuate an action decision or finding. So all three of you would have to vote in favor of it. And that's per the city's municipal code.
Thank you, Henry.
I'll make a motion. Staff recommendation to adopt resolution PC 2022-22 denying variance 2202 with the findings and conditions as recommended by staff.
I voted in second. I have a motion.
Hi.
Sorry.
Hi. And now moving forward on to our informational. Maybe we have anything?
Just pretty cool now to report back to the Plan Commission. So a couple of us went to the Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting. For last, anyway. We went to, I think, last week. So they were making decision regarding specification of the environment's impact report for a rail line between Union Station and to the Potomac Valley. And there were three options that were being evaluated. One of those options would be that it ends in Potomac. The other two options would be that you know, so comes the Potomac Valley, but it was in India. So they certified the EIR and with the preferred option that the, the, the rail line would end in Potomac. So, so that's really good news. I know it's been an effort that's RTTC has undertaken for several years. So it's, so it's kind of coming to an conclusion. There's some more studies that are still required and they're going to narrow it down kind of like the sites and locations. So it'll be a few stops in the Potomac Valley. But that route would be from Coachella through the, the Banning Pass. We'd go down to Fortin and go up through Union Station. The route would be estimated about the hours. And there would be two different trips during the day. So it's not a continuous. You know, maybe there's opportunities for that in the future. Maybe it'd be like a Amtrak type of service between here and, and the Union Station. So we thought that was pretty good news. So the next stage for city staff is we did budget for a feasibility study on a potential train stop in the city. So we'll be looking at that and know kinds of plan fish at some point. And you'll be less than, but or that. Well, just one quick announcement, also next week, special meeting for the Plan Commission. This is different at 6 o'clock. It'd be at 5:00 PM. It's on Tuesday. And I consider two items, actually. So one is a city-initiated general amendment and zone change for two properties that are south of Avenue 52. And it's up for the Plan Commission. And then also a expansion of the license for the Santa Fe restaurant. And for the shopping centers, that would be for the That's all I got.
What exactly are they doing on the Santa Fe? Are they expand, expanding the liquor license or is it a?
Um, yeah, they expanded the restaurant area before you. So they expanded areas. So whenever there's expansion of the area, does require that's come back to the Plan Commission.
I thought that was already done. We haven't waited on that one. You've been working on it for a while, haven't you?
Yeah, I, I heard that we've been working on it for a while.
I thought they came for COVID reasons because they did that outdoor thing.
No, but it was, they already had incorporated. They weren't working. I mean, it's been a while since I've been there, but I know they were working on it.
Well, we're not to go. I do have a question. There's an assembly bill or Senate bill that's potentially going to change how delivery services and what it's only for, for cannabis. I'll send you an email with which one it would change it where it only, it would change it only to delivery for like medical. I'm not sure with that. I was doing, yeah, I'll send you the one I have and see what that would do and how it would affect like.
Is this new legislation?
Yeah, new legislation, this.
Because we already have some delivery services. We have offices, Chavez, we have the other one next to Carmen's behind us.
Yeah, so I'll send you just see what it would do to the, the delivery services and the impact on the.
Yeah, I know. We appreciate that. It's been hard to follow up on the legislation because our taxes are our report of the city before. So hopefully eventually we'll be able to keep my top of this. There's always change, but that's changed. Is that, is that the same practice to reduce the taxes on the current industry? So we have benefit because we've been hearing from a lot of the cannabis human sellers that really the state taxes are the local taxes that we have are very small.
So that's all we got. The only thing left is adjournment at 6:31 PM.